You need new file folders.
That'll be about the fifth one.
What, the hour?
I guess it's the middle folder.
Fire file folder.
It's ratty.
Reminds me of Marco.
It reminds me of Phil Brooks if you want to know the truth.
All right, we're going to call the meeting to order at 7:31 PM. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes of the mayor and council meeting of June 16th, 2014, and our executive session as well as the C3 Neighborhood Commercial District Forum.
I wasn't here for the C3, so I just let somebody else handle that.
I have not received the minutes from the executive session.
We typically don't send them out. Chris will read a summary.
Okay.
Their executive session minutes are under lock and key.
Okay.
Do you want me to read the summary? All right, so here's the summary of our executive session of June 16th, 2014. Mayor Serena called executive session to order at 9:33 PM, June 16th, 2014, to discuss a personnel matter and a legal matter. In attendance at the meeting were council members Liz Gross, Linda Kuiper, Samuel Shogey, and Marie Stetson, along with WS Ingersoll, town manager, and Jennifer Mulligan, town clerk. The discussions concern the Marina manager's contract and a possible legal remedy to the Quaker Neck sanitary issues. No motions were made or passed. The meeting adjourned at 9:58 PM. Minutes were taken and are part of the record.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
My move that we approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed?
I've read them, I just don't know whether they're accurate or not.
All right. Our second order of business is the payment of bills. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
How much do you think?
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Read in if they agree to pay the bills. Our third item of business is Upper Shore Regional Health. Patty Willis is here to update their mission and strategic plan. And I'm sorry that Ken is... Was he not feeling well, or did he have a conflict?
No, he ended up having a conflict at the last minute, so we rescheduled.
Right.
He thought, "I'll give it a shot."
Forge ahead.
See if you can tolerate me.
All right.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me come and speak to you tonight to brief you on some pretty exciting news. We've spent the last six months working on a new strategic plan. Actually, we began the process several years back with the whole regionalization study that ultimately led to the merger of Chester River, the former Chester River Health, with Shore Regional Health a year ago, July 1st. Hardly seems possible. But we've just celebrated our first anniversary or birthday as Shore Regional Health, and we celebrated that by engaging our entire team in our new mission statement, which I'm going to share with you this evening and tell you a little bit about. Before I get into that, I would like to thank you briefly for hosting the public briefing the 25th of June on the pilot study for oil remediation at the hospital site. I was grateful for the turnout, grateful for the support, and we have documents coming to use that can be posted on your website, that can be kept in a publicly accessible place of your choosing. That will include all of the documents that we discussed that evening, so those will be on their way to you very shortly. In fact, I had hoped to bring them tonight, but didn't get them picked up in time. So we'll have those for you electronically and in hard copy. And thank you again for hosting, and I do believe we could have stayed quite late that evening talking.
Oh, yeah.
But it sounds like you have quite a few late evenings.
Yes, we do.
We began a strategic planning process just about six months ago, and what I'm passing around to you, and I've left copies on the table here, is really a summary of our strategic mission, vision, and values. And of course, anyone who's been involved in strategic planning knows that getting to the bedrock of those important things is really the first step in moving forward in your strategic planning. We began with an assessment of health care and how it's changing. And the really important cue in the change in health care is the move from really institution-centric health care, which is hospital-centric and organization-centric, to people-centric health care. And I know that seems a little... Goes without saying that health care should be about people. But we've been very focused as an industry for many, many decades on our bricks and mortar, our facilities, our technology, our equipment. And all of that is very important, but it's important so that we can achieve something. And that something is healthier community. And the refocus of health care in general nationwide, and not just locally or statewide, is really about helping people stay well, manage their chronic diseases, so that they don't have to be hospitalized. Because you know the cost of health care has risen so exponentially in this country over decades, and centuries, I guess, that as a civilization, we really cannot afford to keep this trend going. It's an enormous burden on the nation when there are so many additional needs. So what has happened in the nation, and particularly in the state of Maryland, which is unique in all the 50 states in the way it reimburses for health care? What has happened is payment methods are now... Reimbursement methods for health care are shifting to not grow volume, but to grow value. And value is defined in health care, whether it's the Centers for Medicare Services or the state of Maryland's rate-regulating organization. Value is defined as quality, safety, and patient experience. And safety goes without saying, perhaps, in health care, but we feel the need to say it. We want to provide care that is safe when we perform a procedure, it's done correctly on the right part of the body, and done within standards that are nationally and internationally acceptable. When we talk about quality, we talk about making sure that the care that you receive is the care that you need, and that it is no more and no less than the care that you need, that it sends you home better or in an improved status from what you came into the emergency department or the hospital. It sends you home in an improved status rather than a worse status, having acquired something in the hospital that you didn't come in with. And finally, patient satisfaction. Actually, the federal government and the state of Maryland have changed the way they reimburse for health care services, so that patient satisfaction matters. And this is a very significant shift in the way health care will be delivered and is actually being delivered now. You may know that, for example, for people who have chronic diseases, let's say diabetes, for example, if you come to the emergency department in severe need, you're taken care of, you may be admitted, you may be discharged. If you return to the emergency department or to the hospital within 30 days for the same condition, let's say unmanaged diabetes, the hospital does not get paid for that. Our incentive now is to deploy resources to enable you to receive care in your community through partnerships or through our services deployed elsewhere. So, for example, the Diabetes Endocrine Center is now here in Chestertown, and the two endocrinologists are seeing patients who have diabetes. The educators, of course, continue to see patients as they always have. And the goal is to help people maintain their health status without needing that late-night ride or that weekend ride to the emergency department for an acute episode of illness. So this is the culture, the environment that health care is in right now, and the environment that our organization began its strategic planning process understanding. And we've been watching volumes in our hospitals shift over the last several years. So that nationwide, inpatient admissions and emergency department admissions are down. They're actually lower than they have been by about 10% region-wide. Every county in our region, and every region of the state of Maryland, and across the country. So this has been a significant sea change in health care, and one that we expect to continue based upon all of the evaluations that we see, and the things that are governing how we are reimbursed for the care that we provide. So you'll see a lot of changes begin to roll out over time, over the next several months and years. This is a five-year strategic plan. That will show up as more outpatient types of programs, such as the diabetes center here. That will show up as programs that help patients, when they're discharged from the hospital, get connected to the post-discharge care that they need, help them understand and get access to services such as getting their prescriptions filled, understanding their prescriptions, getting a follow-up visit with a primary care physician, getting a primary care physician if they don't have one. And this is going to involve a lot of partnerships. So our mission, which is creating healthier communities together, really focuses on the big shift in health care and the big shift for us. Creating healthier communities, I've just described the reason for that. And the "together" part means not only our 2,500 team members or employees system-wide, our 250 physicians system-wide, our volunteers system-wide, numbering close to 1,000, but it also includes partners in the community, such as health departments, departments of social services, transportation partners, who are people who are performing transportation as their business. So these are very important times for us. We will be communicating with you on a regular basis as this rolls... As this mission rolls forward. Our vision is to be the region's leader in patient-centered care. And some of the things that you'll probably see there, one of the things that I think you're seeing, beginning to see nationwide, is unlimited visiting hours at the patient and family's request. In other words, hospitals aren't going to set parameters for that. Families and patients will set parameters for how visitation occurs, because a family is a very important... Very important necessity for helping patients get well, get to the next level of care, and get out of the hospital or the emergency department. We're already doing some of these things, and we'll be expanding them as time goes on. Home health will certainly become a bigger, more robust service than it even is now, because people will need more access to care in their communities of the nature of home health. Some of the five goals that we have, and I'll wrap it up with that, are quality in the patient experience, which I've mentioned already. And I think the new emergency department here in Chestertown is one of the evidences or examples of that particular goal, because that patient experience in that new emergency department is going to be vastly different from the patient experience in the present setting because of the way the facility has been designed. And by the way, it has changed pretty dramatically since your tour in April, and is right on target for opening probably right after Labor Day. So very exciting... Very exciting changes going on there. Innovation and integrated care. Innovation is, of course, the use of technologies such as the EICU that we talked to you about when you did the ER tour. The 3D mammography that's here in Chestertown is the only place on the eastern shore that has that technology in the Lay Women's Center. Very innovative, very forward-thinking, very grateful to the donors and the community who supported that. And these are the important kinds of services, technology-wise, that innovation and integrated care. Integrated care also speaks to that connectedness with community partners that we will continue and will grow. We have a good working relationship with Dr. Leland Spencer. We'll continue that relationship with the health department here, and with all of our community partners in the county to be able to expand our services in partnership with them. Ease of access, I think the diabetes center here is a great example of that. There have been no endocrinologists available in Kent County. There are now two on a regular basis. They see patients every week and are providing the same level of care here that's available throughout the health system. Highly engaged team members and physician partners. I would just say, we celebrated the service anniversaries of 82 employees here in Chestertown just this spring, and some of them were celebrating more than 40 years of service with the health system. We also, you know, we believe in making sure that our employees also have access to healthy lifestyles. So we celebrated our birthday by sending out healthy snacks to... We made deliveries to the entire system, all five counties. They were, yes, cupcakes, but they were carrot cupcakes. So that was our nod to health on this anniversary of our birthday as a system. And finally, consistently strong financial performance is our fifth goal. As you may know, we had a terrible year last year, lost about $8 million system-wide, and this year we have managed to not only recoup that loss, but we are posting a profit for fiscal year 14 that just ended June 30th. It's taken the efforts of an entire team, a lot of cooperation, and it's part of the change that we're dealing with, is learning to work with this new type of reimbursement for health care. So big challenges which are faced by every hospital and health system in Maryland, but we are very excited that we made a good first step toward that in our new strategic plan. Our next steps will be the moving forward with an annual operating plan of the strategic plan, which takes specific initiatives and tactics and works on those throughout the year. Some of those I've mentioned to you in our conversation. I will send you out a copy of the summary of the strategic plan. It's a little more detailed than just the sheet that I gave you there. But with that, I will stop and ask if you have any questions about the plan or about anything else that's going on at Shore Regional Health.
I've been wanting to ask somebody this question for 30 years. I have been at the hospital for 30 years, but the bill was fine except when I got down to a pair of paper slippers that they said I had to have, and they cost about $8 on the bill.
I'm going to go get my wallet, I'll be right there.
She knew I'd bring that problem up. I hope somebody is realistically charging what things cost now. There's no doubt in my mind they were looking at that up. They were using that to make up some other deficit or something, something like that.
Well, actually, I mentioned that Maryland is rather unique in its reimbursement of health care, and they're very specific about what charges can be charged. But this is the traditional $6 aspirin complaint, you know? Everybody knows you can go buy many bottles of aspirin for $6, but if you get aspirin in a hospital, it has been rumored that they are $6, and you have $8 paper slippers. The issue, I think, and I am not an expert on pricing in health care, but I know that the factors that go into health care pricing, not just at our organization, but everywhere, are everything from the fact that we keep the lights on 24/7 and the emergency department open 365 days a year, to the fact that, you know, there's a certain amount of, God love us, liability insurance that goes into that pair of paper slippers you were wearing. And all of that is factored in as a percentage. I have now reached the pinnacle of my understanding of health care supplies pricing. But if you'd like, I can look into and get a breakdown for you on that particular item.
Maybe they don't even issue paper slippers. Do they still issue paper slippers?
I think it depends.
These were little blue pens.
Not depends.
Depends.
It depends on whether you are...
Paper depends.
Whether you're in the operating room or whether you are an inpatient. I know we want you to wear slippers that are not paper, that have little stickies on the bottom when you're an inpatient, so that you don't fall. So the paper slippers may have been like a same-day surgery kind of thing, or something like that.
Yeah, my toes came through them anyways.
After six weeks, they started to go.
After six weeks, you wore them out?
How many people do you employ?
How many do we employ, system-wide?
Just at the local hospital here?
Just at Chestertown. Let me try and do the math here. I'm going to say it's about between 300 and 400.
And in the strategic plan, do you have any plans on increasing that number or keeping it steady?
We don't have any plans for changing any of our employment numbers. I think what we will see over time, and as I get questions from young people who are looking at health care careers, I say, "Go for it," because there's going to be a huge need. All of us are aging and going to need care in the future, so there's a huge need for health care workforce in the future. I think the jobs are going to be probably different in the future. How far ahead is the future, within the next five years? Probably not drastically changed, although you may see people who may have been inpatient nurses, for example, working in these transitional care kinds of programs, where they're assisting people who are discharged from the hospital to understand their meds and understand their follow-up visits and understand their physical therapy and their diet and, you know, all of those kinds of things. So the short answer is, we don't plan any changes in the strategic plan related to employment. I do think, however, that all of us deal with our jobs changing on a regular basis, and we'll probably see more of that. People doing... People working, but doing different things.
Are Chester River Manor and Hospice included in your five-year plan?
They are. The five-year plan covers, excuse me, the entire enterprise.
And with the home health, do you coordinate that through the health department?
We work with many partners, but we have the current Chester River Home Health, which provides home health services here in the region, and very, very active. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
And we have presented again hospitality last week.
No problem. My pleasure. All right. The next order of business is the Mr. Arrowood's report from the Chestertown Recreation Commission. I have a written statement by Billy. He's unable to attend due to work commitments, so I'm going to read his report. Chestertown Rec Commission Update, July 2014. Movie night in the park. Our first two movie nights have been a great success, averaging over 80 people, a significant improvement over last year. Our next film is this Friday, and it is The Karate Kid, a classic. Students from East-West Martial Arts will be on hand starting at 7:30 PM to perform demonstrations in advance of the program. Our summer bocce night enters the playoffs next week, and despite numerous rainouts, the league of over 100 members has had a rollicking summer. Plans are already in the works for the short five-week fall tournament beginning the week after Labor Day. Additionally, the CRC hopes to offer an adult co-ed kickball league starting at the same time. Location for play is to be determined. On August 16th, tying in with the Charlie Graves Day celebration, the CRC will help sponsor a neighborhood block party in the upper Calvert Street area. We will be providing funds for the inflatable equipment and handling logistical details. No vendors will be present, just neighbors. We request a meeting with Mr. Ingersoll and Police Chief Baker to discuss street logistics. Following this event, the CRC will be reaching out to other neighborhoods in Chestertown to host block parties in the same manner. Here's a financial request. We would like to purchase two portable basketball hoops for a three-on-three tournament at the block party. These hoops would also be used for a hoop jam for younger players at the movie-in-the-park showing of Space Jam on August 8th. I am told that the town had such equipment, which was in fair condition, but as of last spring, it was scrapped by the town shop.
I doubt both of those things. It was pretty torn up when... I have one that I'll donate to them, though.
Okay. Cost is approximately $500 for the pair. Falls and such, I can purchase locally for a low cost. The CRC awaits any opportunity to discuss this administration's interpretation of the Rec Commission's purpose and mission. We are somewhat disheartened by the MNC statements concerning the nature of this group on June 16th, and look forward to working with you to ensure that we are being used to both the best of our abilities and for the greater good of the town. We report that one of the members of the commission, Sally Harding, has resigned due to family commitments and what she felt was a lack of urgent response by the mayor and council to the pressing need for facilities in the town. I will add that I've talked to Sally, and I would respectfully disagree with the second half of that statement.
Interpretation.
Our next meeting is this Friday at 6:00 PM. We will meet at the foot of High Street near the Custom House in preparation for movie night. Any members of the mayor and council are always welcome, as is the public. At this meeting, it is recommended that you bring your own chair. Respectfully submitted, Bill Arrowood, Chairman, Chestertown Recreation Commission. All righty. Any questions or comments?
Boy's requesting some money.
Yes.
Was this not in the budget that he submitted?
I emailed Bill today, and I asked him that question, and I didn't get a response specific to whether or not that could come out of the money that was allocated to their budget, or if this was a separate request outside of their budget. Because if it's a separate request, we need to follow the procedure that we created a couple months ago, which is, we need a formal request in writing with an explanation, hopefully in person, and then we vote on it the following meeting.
And I guess that was it. What was the date of the block party?
August 16th.
Well, I think you should take some of this budget for now.
Well, I have questions. How does Pat account for the revenue from the Recreation Commission? Because my understanding that you have to pay $25 to join the bocce league, and there were two invoices the last meeting for t-shirts that were over. I think the two invoices totaled over $600. I'd like to see where the revenue is going and how it's being accounted for before we approve any expenses.
So he said there was 100 bocce league members, and what was the fee that he was collecting?
Was it $25?
Per team or per member?
I thought it was per member.
For each. I would say it's per member. I don't know.
I'll ask her. I think she's allowed the bocce league to run on its own. In other words, their income goes...
I thought you said that they bought the...
Exactly. Those funds from the bocce league don't come into the mayor and council and then go out for t-shirts, but they did charge the t-shirts to the town, correct?
There were two invoices.
So...
The list.
I see what you're talking about. Let's see.
Can I ask a question? On the hoops, is he talking about the kind that you fill with sand and you...
Uh-huh. That's my understanding.
I have one sitting in my driveway that's brand-new. It never gets used. My kid prefers hockey.
I have one, but I couldn't reach up to the 10-foot height ever, so...
But it's probably adjustable kind.
You can adjust it.
I know mine, you could adjust. I felt shame.
You got to adjust it way down low.
Bring it down to eight feet.
You feel like you have game.
Tell the chairman, two staff members are donating these hoops.
Okay, so what are our specific action items regarding this report? We want... What do we want exactly?
We want...what do we want exactly?
I would like to see the revenues. I would like an accounting of the revenues.
Of the bocce.
Mm-hmm. And what the two invoices for the t-shirts were for, because if I remember correctly, it was over $600.
Yeah.
I was thinking at the end of the year, he would give us some kind of accounting for them.
I think he did last year.
He did.
I think he said, you know, this were the revenues, here are our fees, but I forget. I don't know that those t-shirts were bought by us last year, to tell you the truth. I thought they were just bought out of his revenues.
That's what he...I think that's what he said to us.
Yeah, maybe he's intent to turn in the revenues.
And I'd like to know if there are actual invoices turned in for the checks that are made payable to the chairman of the Recreation Commission.
Oh, I'm sure that there are, because Pat won't write a check if she doesn't.
Why aren't the checks made payable to the vendor?
Oh, so the invoices...
He pays them.
He paid them, then. But then, right...
These are taxpayer dollars here.
You're welcome to invoice it for anything that we pay out.
Well, that's why I'm asking, why aren't the checks made payable to the vendors?
Or is that on the...
No, it's on the first page.
Oh, there it is. Oh, that's for the movie.
But it says pay.
All right. What do we want to create? Do we want to create a spreadsheet? Well, let's just give you what you want first, and then you tell us whether it meets the standards, and we'll compare it to last year's, too, how it's done.
Well, not just...a revenue and expense report.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think we should accept his report exclusive of the request for funding, pending further information, and let him know that we have two hoops available for his use.
So Billy, you think we have one hoop that we could give him?
I think we have two.
He's got one.
And I'm not sure that the ones in the yard, if the ones, I promise you, if they were thrown away at the yard, they were...I think we got 10 or 12 during the hot spots grants. Some were just completely annihilated. It was shameful, but others, we kept in the yard for events and...
I'm just saying, we want to...
I don't think this is all went through any good, so we'll check that. I'll check that, and my offer stands for, I don't know if it's adequate for his needs. We do have one, I don't know, where are they gonna have this, right in the street?
I think it's right there.
Okay.
There is one there that we saw. I don't know if you weren't there. They have that one. It's in an okay shape.
Well, we ought to be able to come up with two, that way. If not, $500 sounds awfully cheap for two of them.
Yeah, I agree. I told him the same. All right. So we accept the report, and we would like to see a revenue, a report on the revenue and expenses today.
Let's see what he's done. Yeah, what he's done, how he keeps his records. So who's gonna follow up on that?
We will.
Yeah.
You and Jen.
I will, Mark.
Okay. With Pat?
In particular relation to the, you know, the expense for the bocce league t-shirts, was the revenue collected and brought to the town?
I guess it's...
The request for the...
Oh, okay.
It's all in. Basketball things will be pending till we find out whether there's money in his budget to pay for that.
Last year, the bocce league was all self-sustaining, so it was none in and nut out, and that's really, that's fine with me, because, you know, trickling in and all that, and people bringing in things they pay me back. We usually ask for the invoices that they had, that they paid out, so with third-party purchasing, we don't like that either.
All right. Let's move on to the town managers' reports. Bill Ingersoll.
All right. You know, I want to just say one thing that I don't have on this, but the fireworks, I don't know why I didn't anticipate that. The fireworks the other night were spectacular, and the two gentlemen that do this every year, they don't get paid for it, and our men, you know, they install all these things days in advance, and they shoot them electronically. And a lot of people don't see the lower parts of the show because they're maybe in town or something, or buildings in between, but if you're on the river and you get a chance to watch this show from ground level, it was really fantastic. The ground displays really heightened the whole effect, and again, I don't know where he keeps coming up with new shells. $10,000 for the fireworks, $4,000 for insurance, and I would say you've got a $30,000 or $40,000 show.
Where did they shoot from this year?
They shot right from, thank you to the college for letting us shoot off next to the boathouse, between the boathouse and the armory. Everyone tried to cancel this. We got calls all day Thursday, is it raining, is it gonna be a rainout? And then all day Friday, is it gonna be too windy to shoot them off? And I said, "If it snows, we're still gonna do it." So I just want to compliment Richard Proctor and Joe Nasotka for again donating all their time, and that includes when they go by this show, they know what they're doing. There was no shell that was larger than six inches because of the 911 and the rules that go with that and the proximity of the armory. So it's just, it's amazing what they did with, you know, with what they're able to buy. Two, four, and six-inch shells.
Gets better every year.
Yeah. They really have that electronic part down pat. Website, okay, I'm gonna turn this over to Sam, the website bid award. I think by now, everyone's had a chance to look at Sam's tabulation, and a couple of of you have come in and looked further at the submittals. We attempted to have a motion in our last meeting concerning this website award, and I think I put it on here for further discussion tonight. A lot of the bidders have called and said, "When are we gonna hear?" And I said, "July 7th."
Anything, Sam?
I don't think so. I went through everyone, looked at sample websites, read detailed proposals from the two that we had identified as leaders.
Right.
And I think your conclusion is absolutely correct, and I'd like to move that we award the contract to Moo Productions as a local firm, you know, with the flavor of the community, you know, in mind.
Before I second that, Lynn, did you have anything to say?
No.
No?
I'm gone. I'm old.
I don't know enough about the technical part of it. I might use my grandchildren to do my telephone for crying out loud. But I do know that I like the price. I like the fact that the one that Sam is recommending also takes care of Sultana, the Garfield, a couple of other things. Those are things we want to promote anyway. I mean, it's free enterprise, and it brings money into town, and it works well, so...and if you have somebody that's doing it for one, you know, it's easy enough to do it for the other ones, too, so...I think we're getting more bounce for our book, which, by the way, is the cheapest book, wasn't it?
One of the cheapest, yeah.
Well, I also thought her proposal was written in English that you could understand.
Yeah.
I mean, that, I found, the other one was just kind of generic. It didn't even mention Chestertown.
I would like to move that we go with Sam's recommendation and go for the Moo.
Liz already...
You seconded it.
I moved that name of motion.
Oh, you already did.
You can second.
I'll second.
All right.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
All right, there's a motion out on the floor with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Let's get it done.
Okay. The council unanimously votes to give the website bid award to Moo Productions of Award in Maryland. I would like to thank Mr. Dinger for his interest. He's the second-low bidder. He came here tonight, I guess from Baltimore, has called continually to see how the process was going, and thank you for...
Thank you for your attendance.
Yes, thanks for coming. Thanks for your bid.
Beautiful site.
Next, I have the resignation letter from Sidney Brooks. I think the council already knows. This letter's my official notification to you. I intend to retire from my jobs as meter monitor and school crossing guard effective August 1st. My last day of work will be July 31st. It's been a pleasure working in Chestertown with the police department, street crew and staff in Town Hall. Bill Ingersoll was the best boss ever.
Make that in there.
I'm ad-libbing right now. He always had time to listen and make wise suggestions for better ways to handle various situations. I'll miss the great people with whom I have worked. I have made a folder of my duties and how to do them. If my help is needed in making this a smooth transition, please let me know. I'm happy to train and explain procedures. Sidney Brooks.
What was the date of her retirement?
August 1st.
August 1st.
She put the prepositions where they belonged in the sentences, too, I want you to know.
Is it resignation or retirement?
Retirement, really. She, I think it said retire in the first, and we put resignation here, but we would accept it in good standing, I would hope, and any comments from... Well, it's just something that you say when, you know...
I think we should accept it with gratitude.
Yep.
And thanks for her service.
She really took her job seriously, and I have never seen that position where somebody didn't come and say, "That's a really unfair meter monitor," or whatever. It's a thankless job. Even being a crossing guard, you get some occasional remarks and one-finger salutes. It's really incredible. Just go stand out there one day, and you'll find out.
Has the Kankanning School System been approached about taking over the crossing guard?
No, I haven't had time to do that, and I really wanted it to be a dialogue. I've been here a long time, and I can't really remember why exactly the town does this. I mean, we do get remunerated 50% by the county for that, but I can tell you, it's necessary at the elementary school. It's not so necessary with the consolidation at the middle school. The way they've got the buses arranged, there's not a lot of crossings there, not as much, but it's an integral part or integral part of the Calvert Street scene in the morning and afternoon, so...and I have further down here that we, to discuss the future of downtown meters, and that's really closely connected, too, because it was a big part of Sidney's job, and if it's not, if we're not gonna do that, and now is the time for the council to decide whether we're gonna cover the meters or not. It has a lot to do with what we're gonna call this next job. Is it gonna be a crossing guard? Is it gonna be an enforcement type? Or is it just gonna be town-wide? I will say, this is my personal opinion, I think that all the enforcement that we do at the shopping centers is not completely necessary. I don't know how they get away with not policing their fire lanes. It's something that we've done over the year, and the angriest people that come in here are fire lane victims, so we've had some real...it's lucky we have glass in the door sometimes, the way they go out, but those doors are hard to slam, so...
Do we want to discuss that?
I think, I wish you would. I wish you'd say, maybe take a vote on what your position is on the meters, either temporarily or permanently. Are you gonna cover them in the downtown or not?
I would, we've talked this to death, and I would like to actually just do something. And so I think this is a great opportunity to try covering the meters and not have parking meters downtown, and we should try it from August 1st through the end of the year.
I just need a ticket.
And if people go nuts, then we can take the covers off.
We'd already agreed that we were just waiting...
We did a survey of the business owners. They almost unanimously, or at least a vast majority, voted to cover them. Let's cover them. It's a wash, because we won't rehire this person because she's retiring, and we won't lose money.
And we're gonna have the police just keep an eye on things, too.
If someone's parked there for like a week...
He actually cost his money the last couple of weeks.
I know, she did.
Well, I make a motion that we bag the downtown meters on July 31st.
Through the holiday season?
I would say we...oh, sorry.
Bag them. That's what everybody wants. And then when the cycle changes, you know, the meters are still there, the bags are on them, and then the businesses, you know, I don't know if they give them six months or not, but nobody, there are only three businesses who wanted meters, so...
I think a six-month trial could probably be a reasonable way, because it would take us through the Christmas shopping, and there may be some problems with it.
We traditionally...
You may have business owners coming in and saying, "Please give them back."
Exactly.
We bag them in November.
We bag them until February 1st.
We always bag them from Thanksgiving till after the New Year's holiday.
I would like to see us do a six-month trial period. August 1st through the end of January, we'll reevaluate. If there's not a huge uproar, we'll just keep them bagged, and if there is a huge uproar, we can reopen the discussion again.
Or if it's abused, and it's more than, it's more than just an uproar against it, but if you can't find places to park because people are parking all day long and never moving until they leave their office or what, you know, their shop.
Knock on the business door and ask them to move their car.
Well, I don't know who they all are, but I think we need to keep an eye on it, and let's review it.
Well, there are apartment houses there, too.
Now, one, oh, gosh, Bob Ramsey told me that he has it in his lease that his tenants are not to park on the street during business hours, and I think they pretty much...
That'll do it.
...take care of that. So that is an issue. What do we do with the other residents upstairs?
Well, is this vote done? Did they...
No, no one seconded it, yeah.
Well, I make a motion that we bag the meters July 31st.
Until the end of...
For six months.
January.
Now, do you want the six months to include the Christmas break?
It will automatically.
Jan. All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's gonna be big. That's huge.
And I'll report back as to how this is working. Chief will help. As far as telling us whether it looks like a lot of people are parking there, chief has done me a favor in going over what we would do without a crossing guard, it's come to the, I mean, without a meter monitor or crossing guard, but that wasn't understanding that the meters would be bagged.
Yes, sir. I would point out that there are other duties, and I believe she mentioned she had a folder or something, but there are other duties she performs that go, have to be fixed up by someone, and could be somewhat substantial, and that's involving the flagging of citations and red speed and those sort of things, very time-consuming, so just bagging the meters doesn't totally eliminate all of her responsibility.
Well, it's not something that it seems like the police can do totally themselves, except for maybe a short period of time.
We're happy and certainly are confident that we can take care of the handicap parking and those type of things, but administratively, it would be...
Most of the flagging that we had came from meter parking, most of the flagging. And, you know, that's another thing that I really thought we left one step out of, and that was to warn people, to send them a letter from the town saying, "Okay, you're at that edge now where you're gonna get flagged, so if you don't do this..." And we could add $20 or 25 for sending that letter out, but it saves people not only over $100 sometimes, but a trip to Easton or, you know, where is it, Elkton? And a lot of anger, because most people come in here and say, "My child was driving this car, and I never saw the, I never saw the ticket," you know? That's how most of them are. So I think that when we eliminate the meters, we're gonna have a lot less flagging, and I'll try to give you a report as to how many of these flaggings were as a result of not paying, parking on yellow or parking on handicap.
No, I'd like to answer Linda's comment about maybe the school board taking over crossing guards. When I was chief of police, admittedly, that was a long time ago. I went to the superintendent and talked to him about that. He was very much, they have, at that time, their building was right there by the crossing guards where I needed them, and they had custodians in there, and I said, "You know, it'd be nice if you had them come out and, you know, I'd be glad to train them on what they have to do and so forth." He was off for two days, and then I got a phone call and saying, "No, absolutely not. We will not do it. You have to do it." And it was a tough job getting people to do that for that period of time, and sometimes they wouldn't show up, and we had to fill in, chief, and that made it difficult, too, so...
Well, any, I know, I think we need to start at the top on this, and with Dr. Couch, and I know she's going through, you know, a terrible thing right now.
Yeah, and I think we get the PTA, if it's still active.
It revived, the last time we stopped was maybe 25 years ago. It revived the PTA at Garnett Elementary School, and they were pretty much dormant until that happened, and we had a room full of angry mothers and a few fathers saying, "It's a danger, and why'd you stop?" Okay. Yeah, what's that? Oh, Doris, Doris Winner.[1776.02] Oh, Doris, Doris Winter. I don't know how many of you know Doris Winter. She, she came here as a volunteer a long time ago at the visitor's center, and then she became so important that we hired her part-time. What a lovely woman. And she's had cancer, and her doctor, and she came back and wanted to work. And her doctor said, "No, you can't do that." You know, she, she had some problems from just being here a week or two. Gosh, we really, really liked her, and I, I just wanted to say that maybe you didn't know her, but she was special. And she's still, you know, she would still like to work. So, we're going to, this summer, we're going to just have younger employees doing something that are maybe helping us marina, and it's, you know, minimum wage. So, we'll take care of that. We've already had a couple people call about the position, though it won't be a position until September. The, I have this emergency ordinance. I think I sent it to everybody on the council. We don't usually use emergency ordinances, but we've been talking about selling these projects, housing projects in town for over two years. We brought it up in the State of the Town address twice formally. And we went to go to settlement two weeks ago on June 27th with the state, and the state has, was throwing hundreds of papers at us at the end. And one of them said, "Hey, you didn't notify the public." And I, I, they wanted an attorney's opinion that we, that we went through the process that the state has. So, I, I said, "Gosh, we, we went through everything." And, but it wasn't really adequate for Stuart to feel like he could write the opinion on it. This will make it that way, and if you want me to read it, I will. Emergency ordinance is effective immediately. And then, public notification that we did in the, in, in the State of the Town address, I mean, we were very specific about who we were selling to, the fact that these two projects would be continued, would continue to be low and moderate income projects because of these programs with DHCD. So, let me just quickly read it. "It's an emergency ordinance declaring certain real property to be surplus and authorizing the sale thereof, whereas the town of Chester Town has previously determined that certain real property hereinafter described as surplus and no longer, of no further necessity for the youth municipality, and the cost of maintenance is an unnecessary burden to the taxpayers. And whereas the properties known as the High Steps, 335 to 345 Cannon Street, and Satterfield Court, which is 600 Cannon Street, need rehabilitation to continue their function as affordable family and senior housing. And the town is committed to a tri-party agreement with the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development and the Delaware Valley Development Company, which will receive the above goal, which will achieve the above goal. And whereas the town of Chester Town endeavors to be consistent with the charter and Maryland case law concerning the disposal of public property, which requires official public notification of the sale, but a delay in settlement on the property listed below could jeopardize the pending settlement at DHCD that had been scheduled to occur on June 27, 2014. Now, be it therefore resolved, the town of Chester Town sell, subject to the conditions of sale already agreed to by all parties, for the payment to the town of $75,000 at closing and annual payment in lieu of taxes of $10,000 to the town of Chester Town, the two properties listed below. One, lot and parcel of land conveyed unto the town of Chester Town Municipal Corporation by deed of the Springfield Foundation, Inc., a Maryland corporation dated June 26, 1990, and recorded among the land records of Kent County and Lieber EHP number 293471, also known as the High Steps. And number two, lot or parcel of land conveyed unto the town of Chester Town Municipal Corporation in Kent County, Maryland by deed of Dixon Valve and Coupling, Pennsylvania Corporation, dated December 29, 1983, and recorded among the land records of Kent County and Lieber EHP 15726, also known as Satterfield Court, as well as an abutting 118 square foot piece of land conveyed by deed to the town by Judith Goodall, February 6, 1986, and recorded among the land records of Kent County and Lieber EHP 19389. This emergency ordinance having been introduced on July, July 7, 2014 is hereby adopted and effective on the same date." So, hate to have to do that, but this is the best way to do it. After you sign this, it becomes effective, and settlement will be within a day or two.
Okay. So, it doesn't require the normal two-week notification?
No, we, I mean, we've already given notifications several times. But this will be the official document that we did do it. And there are some.
Go ahead. Go ahead. I was just going to ask, is there any, maybe it's a nomenclature, an emergency ordinance? What, what is the?
Ordinance, otherwise.
You don't have to justify that it's.
No, it's, it's emergency by nature, the fact that the settlement was supposed to be two weeks ago. It's messed up the settlement sheets and the ownership into this fiscal year, which we didn't really mean to be, so.
Well, did the state approve the $10,000 payment to the town in lieu of taxes?
Yes.
I learned that at the MML this year. You can't do that without notifying the state.
Oh, you would, you would, I, I don't really want to bore you with the details of, of how hard it was to, to keep those two figures static. The $10,000 will come annually from the Delaware Valley Corporation.
In perpetuity.
Yep. And, and guess what? In, in the year 2055, this project, the loan will be paid back to the town of Chester Town. I think it's like a $950,000 loan from the state of Maryland to Delaware Valley Corporation. So, if any of you guys are around.
That might still be on council, then, but I'm not sure about the rest of us.
It's going to be a nice windfall.
It's going to be a windfall, yeah.
Yes, indeed.
All right, so do we need a motion to?
I move we adopt the emergency ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We'll just, I'm going to pass three around. Just please sign three.
Is that a typo?
Yeah, there's two typos.
High straps?
Yeah, we got strap.
Strap rule?
Yeah, we got strap, and there's a lever that's small.
Let me change it, go change it real quick and print it out. I have my computer on.
Okay, that's great. Meanwhile, filibuster until.
Where's the, which one's the lever? Where do you see that?
That's a small lever.
Oh, yeah.
Right there.
And number two?
Doesn't really matter.
Which should be capital, capital.
Leave it right there.
Okay.
To be perfect, it does, but I mean, we could be selling, selling the high straps.
That's $10,000 annually perpetual, I mean, it's forever.
Yeah, till 2055, when we own the project. Then we won't get it anymore. Nothing's perpetual, is it?
I'll remind you in 2055, Bill, that we'll probably both be here soon.
That, just a little history, the Satterfield Court was a nylon factory, Wilson Nuttall and Raymond. And when we sold Calvert Heights to the, actually to the, to a company that eventually sold it to the people who are buying this, we used the revenues of that to build Satterfield Court, so that we were able to provide housing for everyone there. For I think the initial rent was $100 a month, and it covered everything. It covered, because we capitalized it upfront. And the, the High Steps was almost as innovative. There were, what you see now is really a rebuild of, of what was eight apartments. Townhouse Apartments is six now. We completely took it down and rebuilt it, and that was a $320,000 state loan that we never really had to pay, but we're paying back now. And that's why the, the proceeds aren't as high, because they get that money back like we're getting this money in 2055. So, lots and lots of people, 16 people at a time or more at, at Satterfield Court, and six families at a time on, at the High Steps. So, I think we did a really fine job of keeping them up, and this is like a new era for the, for the buildings. But it's going to be good for the, the beneficiaries that live there. So, next thing, and the Pride of Baltimore apparently wants to come up here and stay at the marina during the War of 1812 celebration. And the issue came up as marina owners and workers at the marina, is this going to be free? Does the council want to make that free, knowing, and I'm not saying this in a pejorative way, but if you give that to them, I just want, let you know, don't, please don't say, you know, the revenue, I think it's $400 a day.
Well, may I make a suggestion? If you vote to give it to them, then the Coffs Field Committee needs to know, so it can be an in-kind, because the grant is cash and in-kind match.
I'm completely for doing this. Anytime that they come up here, they bring people with them, and it.
I thought we, didn't we delegate the, for the 1812 bookings to the, to Salt Lake?
No, that's.
No, that's downrigging.
Something else, Marty. That's downrigging.
Oh, downrigging, okay.
Probably also be here for me.
I mean, we're plodding along with the marina, but, you know, revenues like that, you know, they're great for the, the bottom line, but they're also great when you gift them to something like that.
Well, they might not come otherwise, too, and that's quite a draw.
I don't, I don't know, but it, I, I think they're free wherever they go. All right? What do you think?
Well, I really, I mean, I'd love to make the motion, but I'm on the committee, so I just made a suggestion that if, if.
Okay. So, you think you have a comp?
The committee can be notified that what the cost would be.
How long are they going to be docking them for?
Three days.
Three days?
So, it's $1,200.
It's $1,200. We wouldn't have expected, anyway. So, I, I think the idea is, let's take the higher.
Will they charge for tours?
Hmm?
Will they charge for tours?
Yes, I think they do, when they go out.
They do sales where they charge spaces.
No, no, but if I go down to the dock and I, I look over.
I don't think they do there, not.
They usually do a combination of free dock, dock tours and sales where they sell spaces.
Yeah, I understand if they go out, if they leave the dock, there's, you know, real, real money involved. But, I mean, I wouldn't want us to give them free docking space and then have everybody paying $5 to go and look around on board.
Yeah.
Or whatever.
Really good.
So, but if they, if they're, if they're having public visits at the dock and they're free, then I'm really happy with giving them free space.
I mean, look at it this way. Usually, people pay them to come to their town.
Well, that's what I was going to say, you know. You have, you don't know whether they're charging to come here.
Yeah. Well, we'll, we'll find that out, but I think.
And that's only fair for them.
It'd be good to have a motion as to our part.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we allow the Pride of Baltimore to dock in the marina for three days, rent-free.
Oh, so good.
All right, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Well, I'll abstain, because I'm on the committee. It's passing anyway.
So, we have four votes in favor and one abstention.
Last but not least, I'm a place, I have a placeholder here for the Chapter 30 Modifications Recreation Commission proposed changes that Liz Rose has worked on.
I sent them out to everybody Thursday, I think.
I didn't get your email, because I was expecting this.
I sent it out on Thursday to everyone. Well, I can review it. I'd like Bill's guidance. What it is, is proposed revisions to the original 36-year-old ordinance that governs the operation of the Recreation Commission. Do revisions to an ordinance have to have sort of two weeks, be introduced and then two weeks?
Yes, yes. Even if you change one word, unless it's a typo.
So, what I'm in doing here is introducing some of my suggestions for revisions to Chapter 30 of our code of ordinance. And the purposes of this are to clarify and revise the document, which is out of date, and to strengthen the role of the Recreation Commission as an advisory body to the mayor and council. I think the Recreation Commission has been really innovative and creative in, in coming up with some of these new activities that we've had in town the last few years, like movie night and the bocce league that we've talked about. But when it comes to thinking about new facilities, I'm suggesting that, that they should be advising us on, on such, and working with us on that. And there were a few other minor things that I came across while I was studying this and a couple of other historic documents as background information. The first major clause of the ordinance says that, that two of the members of the commission should rotate every two years. And that is not being done right now. Right now, the current chairman's term expires next year, and all other six members of the commission have the same expiry date in 2017. So, although it doesn't probably need to be written into the ordinance, I'd like to suggest that the current members, although we've now had one resignation, draws draws and set up a new rotation system, so that two, two of the six, you know, are going to be on for two years, and two for four, and two for six, and that'll start a rotation. The second chapter of the old ordinance says that the commission shall have the power to adopt bylaws. I don't think that anybody but the mayor and council have the power to adopt. We don't even really have bylaws. We have ordinances, but that seemed like a stretch to me, and I suggest that that word be deleted, and that the commission shall have the power to adopt rules and regulations for the proper conduct of public recreation, which is what we expect them to do. The major change deletes the two words in, in Section 3, where it used to say, well, it still says until we revise it, that the commission should provide, conduct, and supervise public playgrounds and athletic fields. I think, et cetera, it's up to the mayor and council to provide the facilities. And it's a, it's a fairly major rewrite. I'm suggesting that it should state that the Recreation Commission should review the recreational facilities and activities available to the residents of Chester Town, and advise the mayor and council of ways in which these facilities and activities could be better managed, improved, or increased. Then, there's a section about the submission of an annual budget, which in fact has always been a requirement of the commission. This is just, the only addition is that I specify that it should be submitted during our annual planning process for the town budget. Section 5 of the old ordinance gives the Recreation Commission the power to appoint, what appears to me in the wording here, to, to appoint town employees, which seems that to me, that's the prerogative of the mayor and council and the town manager. So, I've suggested that they should make recommendations to the mayor and council as to the appointment as needed of a recreation superintendent or other personnel to manage recreational activities. And finally, the old ordinance requires the Recreation Commission to submit monthly and annual reports. That seemed a little burdensome to me. And I'm not sure that they've been doing that, but I'm suggesting they should be quarterly reports, and that one of those quarterly reports can be the annual report. And that we would not approve a budget for the commission if these reports haven't been received. So, in summary, those are the revisions I'm suggesting. I haven't received any feedback, nor have these suggestions actually been seen yet by the Recreation Commission itself. So.
I think, I think what we should do is.
What we should do in the next two weeks?
Yeah, take two weeks for everyone to get a chance to look this over, including the chairman of the Rec Commission and his commission members, and then.
So, I'd like to send this to, Billy, he can forward it to his members.
Yeah. I think they should just be activity-based.
I do, too. That's basically what this is.
Because even with the whole advisory responsibility that they have on some of the recreational opportunities that we have now, I mean, look at what happened with, with the baseball diamond. I mean, they almost, not necessarily strong-armed us, but I mean, they nearly got their way, and all of a sudden, now we have a much more comprehensive and better plan in place. I mean, the Recreation Commission, they advised us not to do Gateway Park. And I don't particularly understand, you know, their, their logic behind some of these things. And, I don't know, the activities that they've sponsored, however, have been dynamite.
Yeah.
But in terms of actually forwarding recommendations about facilities and things like that themselves, and then, of course, with the resignation of, of what's her name, from the commission due to, what was, what was the specific reason, Bill? Because.
Family commitment, Sally?
No, the fail, well, family plus the failure of us that.
Family commitments and what she felt was a lack of urgent response by the mayor and council to the pressing needs for facilities in the town.
And I don't even think that's appropriate to put in a report.
Well, I've talked to Sally, and I don't think she would even agree with that.
It's just, one person resign, and that's it. You know, that's gone a little too far.
I mean, you have Gateway Park, we have the rail trail. I mean, what are these recreational things that we have not been doing?
Well, she said that in her resignation. We should have a copy of the resignation.
Right.
I think that's his interpretation.
That's kind of serious.
We approved the budget, and we've worked with the Board of Ed, worked out a solution, I would, I would say.
Well, not only that, I think we were very generous in the budget on the funds that were appropriated to the Recreation Commission. And like I said earlier, I want to see a revenue and expense report, and then this commission doesn't mention anything about background checks for the people who are serving on the commission.
Well, they would not necessarily need background checks unless they're actually working with children.
They, the intention is to...
But the members of the commission don't do that.
Have activities with all ages.
But the members of the commission aren't necessarily personally involved with the children and doing that.
I think it's just the principle.
If they are, they must have background checks.
If they're working, I mean, they're deemed the Recreation Commission, if they're working in that field. I agree with what that...
They're working in that capacity on that commission.
Right, you know, it's just the principle behind it. I mean, they should have background checks.
Can the town, they're the responsibility.
Why don't we add...
We have to have background checks. They're only, I think ours are $12 now.
Oh, well, I've seen them much more than that.
Didn't we do that a couple of years ago?
I thought we did.
I'm wondering if it's in the codification that we just recently got.
Yeah, but under what, under what?
I think under recreation. I'm gonna check on that because I remember doing that a couple of years ago.
But then it's not in the ordinance.
Well, sometimes the printed, the printed version, like, did we get this off the internet?
There may be an extra little part that we need to change to last year.
Every year we submit, why don't you go take a quick check?
But I mean, nevertheless, the law in Maryland, using experiences now with two organizations that I've been on boards for, with the music festival and the Garfield Center, that anybody who's working with children, as in Playmakers Camp or the youth music program that the festival runs, we do back, you know, background checks.
All right, well, should we put that in the ordinance?
There's a perfect Section 30-5 with appointment of superintendent and other personnel.
Right.
Is to write in, you know, the selection of personnel or, and members too, you know, if they're, if they work in programs that involve children. I think we passed something within the last 18 months, so...
I can add that in.
When the Recreation Commission was formed.
Okay, here.
Yeah, there was a...
Hasn't that changed, I guess?
Yeah, there was something added last year. It was in June of last year. So it's, just hasn't made it into the new version, the new codified version, but you can take that and that does...
This is not an original.
Tomorrow, can you, can you add that electronically to what she submitted?
So then this should be incorporated if we revise the ordinance.
We'll add it electronically so that you all have that.
Okay.
Okay. What section was that? 31?
Section 31, one, add it.
Okay.
It was a whole section.
Sounded familiar when you brought that up.
Can you, before you, can you make the suggested changes that we've seemed to have agreed on and then resend it? And then we'll discuss this.
So this document that I sent out has all the changes in it with, you know, comments with my...
We're gonna add that tomorrow.
And this, if I add this in tomorrow, this is what I would probably send now to Bill to share with his group for feedback before our next meeting.
Correct. Thanks for bringing that up.
I don't think there's anything, I mean, if you're all in general agreement, as I said, I didn't hear anything over the weekend since I sent it out, but give it a day or two and I'll...
I think the big misunderstanding vis-à-vis the mayor and council and the members of this commission, and particularly the chairman, is the role in terms of advising about creation of new facilities. That's where I think, like, I think we all agree that their activities are fantastic and we want to see them do as many as they can do. It's more the advisory part, like, where, how far do we want them to go, if at all, or can we just say...
What I have said is the Recreation Commission should review the recreation facilities and activities available to the residents of Chestertown and advise the mayor and council of ways in which these facilities and activities could be better managed, improved, or increased. I don't think that gives them, you know, leeway to go ahead with planning without consulting with us. And at least that's my hope. That's what I was trying to achieve in that wording.
Record keeper.
And what I tried to do was strengthen the recommendation or advisory role. I can take another look through it and...
What Linda brought up earlier about accounting for funds in Section 30-4, it seems that they're able to solicit for gifts, requests, and all that. And then the last sentence says, however, no money received by the commission may be spent without... There, an additional sentence about account keeping, accounts or bookkeeping of the funds that are taken in the name, like when you're, they're out there getting gifts and they're saying you're giving this to the town, I think in accounting...
Well, I thought, I was surprised to see that sentence here because basically what it says is if, even if they get a donation or a gift, they cannot spend it without it being included in the budget. And as I recall, the budget he gave us did have the revenue side on it.
I think it did, but I think you need to, I think there needs to be one more sentence about record keeping along the way.
Well, maybe we should require his quarterly reports to include financial statements.
Maybe that's the way to do it, keeping receipts of, you know, of money taken in and money spent.
Yeah.
It's a simple thing.
That's true.
Because it's out there and you feel sort of tangentially responsible, and I do too.
I also need to know when their meetings are because I put every other group up for when they meet, and I haven't been receiving notification from them when the meetings are changed.
Well, that must mean there hadn't been any.
There haven't been...
Well, they're having one Friday. I just don't expect that.
Friday before the movies.
There haven't been a lot recently, I knew you had that.
So if I add to that Section 6, that the quarterly report should include reports on revenue.
It's 30-4.
Well, she's thought, she's thinking that she could incorporate that accounting.
In 30-6?
Yeah, where they, where they put that financial reports in the quarterly.
This has to do with gifts.
Yeah, I think there ought to be something about record keeping or receipts.
I'll put it in both places somehow.
Okay, so Liz is gonna make the updates and send us a revised version, and we'll hopefully come to a resolution at our next meeting. All right, is that all, Bill?
I mean, before we actually pass it, the bill and the commission members should have an opportunity to...
I agree.
To discuss with us too.
I think Liz was gonna send...
He's gonna get it, and I probably can't do it tomorrow because I'm out of town all day, but, you know, because this is an ordinance, we have to give it two weeks before we look at it again anyway.
Do we have their email address?
I have Bill's, and he can, I'll ask him to pass it on to his members.
So do you want to, do you want to consider this the introduction tonight?
Maybe we shouldn't.
I wouldn't. I wouldn't. It's too raw. I mean, I mean, it's not, we'll have it prepared as...
For next time, maybe.
I also want to hear from the other commission members. I mean, we only hear from two in particular. And there are how many?
Seven.
Seven.
Now, six.
So there are, you know, five people who are pretty much unaccounted for in that commission because we only hear from two of them. So, I mean, are they even attending the meetings, you know?
I think that's a valid point, as I'm hearing the same thing.
I certainly want to...
Have we seen any minutes?
Not for quite some time. He was good about it for a bit, but like I said, I don't know if they've been meeting.
I don't think they have.
And if they have been meeting, who actually has been present?
Well, if they don't have a quorum, they don't have meetings, so.
Well, it's not, it's not in there about that. Like, the rules, procedures, I think maybe that would be a word I would add.
Add a quorum to Section 1?
I would add to Section 30-2 where you said, you know, you knocked out bylaws and put rules. I would put rules, regulations, and procedures.
Require like notification for meetings and, and quorum.
All right, are you on it, Liz?
Yep.
All right, that brings me to my report. I'll be as brief as I can. We have two folks that need to be reappointed to the Ethics Commission, and their terms are three years in length. And both of these members have been asked if they would like to continue their services. They both replied in the affirmative. So I would like us to reappoint Johnny A. Jones Esquire to the Ethics Commission for a three-year term.
Jim, is he chairman or they make him chairman?
He is the chairman, but I do believe that they make him chairman, similar to what we would do.
Okay.
I would put forth his name or second. I'll put forth a motion that we make him the three-year appointed for three years.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The second member up for reappointment is Ted Chase, who has already served a three-year term and is up for renewal.
I'm willing to do it again.
And willing to do it.
I move we reappoint Ted Chase.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, for the Historic District Commission, we have a member whose term also expired. I asked her if she was willing to continue on a new three-year term, and she replied in the affirmative, and it's a Lexi Colley. So is there a motion to reappoint her to another term?
I don't know the lady, but you know her, anybody?
I don't know anything about her, never.
Uh, no, she's worked at Washington College. She lives on Washington Avenue.
It would be nice if some of these...
She does a great job.
If they would come to our meetings.
I'm in favor. Certainly they've been doing a good job, so...
And they want to stay on.
I'm getting ready to.
Yeah, she does a great job. She's a nice lady.
I move that we reappoint Colley to the Historic District Commission.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And lastly, there has been a vacancy for the last week really on the Historic District Commission, and we did get a resume from Mr. John Ames Jr.
Doctor?
Doctor John Ames Jr., who's interested in serving, and I would like to nominate him to...
I don't know him, but I, he's certainly got an impressive resume and would be, would be a very good person to have on our district.
Do you want to say a word to him?
Well, I know him well, and I've participated in several of his WCL classes on historical subjects.
So he knows his stuff, then?
Oh, yeah.
Good.
So is there a motion to nominate Dr. Ames? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. That's the end of my report. That brings us to award reports. Marty Stetson.
Oh, I get to go first?
He gets to go first all the time.
I know, I'm just spoiling him.
I just want to touch very briefly on the July 3 meeting that we had upstairs, where we had probably 150 people show up over the break-in entrance, and I thought it was a very productive meeting. We got a lot of citizens, and I thought it was very well-handled by the mayor, by the way, and the chief, who took questions from the floor, and I think everybody got an answer that they wanted to hear. Not, I won't say that, wanted to hear, let's say they got an answer to their question or their inquiry, and I think everybody left there feeling much better. And of course, the next day they felt a lot better because they caught the people that found, is that night or the next day?
We had substantial success the next day.
Yeah, so, but, and we can't attribute that to the meeting, but the meeting was very productive in that I, I know the people in my neighborhood have become much more secure, security-conscious because of, not just that meeting, but because of the problems that have happened. So it was a good meeting. And the first Friday, I attended the family first Friday in the, in the park. And we were honored to have the mayor do quite a job of singing.
I heard he just put on a tremendous, unbelievable...
I will, I will comment. Of all the songs and all the people that you did, I liked your Johnny Cash thing. I much more like Johnny Cash. And you could almost close your eyes and visualize Johnny Cash singing. And that may be because I'm a Johnny Cash fan, but... And finally, it's not like necessarily an award report, but I'd like to, with the permission of the council, to meet with the chief of police. Community policing really takes best, takes place best when you have the policeman living in the community. And we have 12 policemen, and we have two that live in town. I can tell you, as chief of police, my most effective police officers were those who lived in town or within two miles of town. And we have them living all over the place. Now, all I would like to do is, I don't want to punish anybody or cause any problems, but I think you can sit down and we can work out some kind of incentives to get our policemen back in town. In fact, when I was there, we paid them so little, some of them couldn't afford it, but we don't pay them that little anymore. They, they get paid reasonably, they get paid enough income that they could certainly live in the town of Chestertown. And when they live in the town of Chestertown, the people see them on the street. If you're living in Galena, you're shopping in Middletown. I don't care what they take, unless they're doing it while they're working, but they're not shopping in Chestertown. They're not going to church in Chestertown, they're not taking their children to the Boy Scouts and things in Chestertown. And all of that counts when it comes to being, getting respect from your, the community. The community likes to see those policemen walking around as real people. And I think we could do that with some kind of incentives to get our policemen to live in the town and become... I said this facetiously to the chief one time, that, are they, do they think we're not safe enough for them to live in Chestertown? You know, I don't think that's true, and I was trying to evade stab at humor. But I would really like to see us get our policemen back living in the town of Chestertown, or at least within two miles of Chestertown. And I think if I talk to him and we work out something, it might be long-term. We might not get them back here for 10 years, but wouldn't it be nice if we have 12 or 14-man police force and they all live in town? And I'll tell you what, their car would be parked in town when they're off duty. I had the mayor of Galena thank me very profusely for the fact that he has a couple of our police cars sitting up in his community. He said, it works miracles by slowing people down, so maybe we could slow our own people down by moving them in town. And that's my, I know you all want to get out of here, you don't want to hear this, but... Oh, I'm asking for you, I don't want to go talk to the chief without talking to the council first. I'm not, I don't want to presume something, but I don't know how it could hurt to talk to them.
We do have that incentive. I'll say it since we haven't had it for a couple of years. $5,000 has been committed by the town in the past for people as far as their down payment to live in town, to buy a house in town.
Yeah, no, that's, that would be part of it.
That's generally matched.
I think we can go, we can go even further than that. If we make it a loan, you could, you could make it even more than that with, and excuse it by year because we'd get it back on, they'll pay the taxes on the house. I mean, there's lots of incentives that we can work out, and sometimes you need a little stick to go along with the carrot, so we can work out something, not to punish people who are already on.
Taser.
Any new hires, you can say, look, you're a new hire, we want you to move into our town, so...
I know a lot of communities that have incentives like, incentives like that. It would be interesting to research what some communities are offering. I know Baltimore does it.
Well, is everybody comfortable with Marty having the discussion? Go for it. Thanks for the head.
I'm sure you're happy to hear that, chief.
I'll be happy.
Did you ever get a chance to meet with him? I'll buy you coffee, so.
No, I think it was, it's one of the microphones for the video.
I received information from the Calvert Street Recreation. They actually have a program for the local youth who live on the street. It's called the 400 Block...
Work Group.
Yeah. Name just slipped my mind, but, I mean, they have the kids doing some really impressive stuff. So it is just a little community group. The kids, they meet pretty regularly. They also clean up the streets. So there is a community service aspect that's tied in to their community service requirement for their schools. And then they also have an allowance too, so that was a nice little touch. So, you know, some of these, these younger kids, was it you or the police chief that one of the kids came up to and was like, I got a job, I got a job? Must have been like five years old, so, but they're, they're really doing a great job trying to turn around their community and keep it clean by, you know, getting the kids active in actually contributing to the well-being of their neighborhood. So they're actually going to come forward and request a donation from the town, and this is going to go towards the program. They have a lot of equipment that they need to purchase, trash bags, brooms, things like that. The donation can either be cash, or maybe if we have some extra stuff lying around the shop, we can donate as well. So definitely a very rewarding program that they've started, and it's, it's been pretty successful so far. Definitely a very rewarding program that they've started, and it's been pretty successful so far, so. I'm going to continue meeting with them and see if we can get their needs met. And then hopefully at the end of the season, they're going to treat their kids to a nice field trip to either an amusement park or something along those lines, so kudos to them. And they're, of course, very appreciative of the meeting that we had several weeks ago. The speed bumps are in place, so very thankful for that, Street Sweeper has come down the road, so things are improving. And you got my email about meeting tomorrow to go over some of the other stuff at 1:00?
Fantastic.
So, that is just about it.
Sam, have the lights been installed on Flatland Road yet?
Not yet, it looks like--
imminent.
Yeah, I've seen some attachments on some of those poles.
It's going to happen soon, let me know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
And it looks like the, right at the corner of High Street Extended and Flatland, they have a steel plate down, so it looks like they're going to fix that pothole soon.
Good.
So, yeah, things are looking good.
All right, Linda, Ward 2.
Okay, I received an email from a resident on Washington Avenue, and there is a neighborhood association now, I responded, and made suggestions, actually, they would like a meeting, and I responded and made suggestions of who I thought should be at the meeting. I did respond with the date of July 16, but Case can't be there, it's a planning meeting, and then I forgot, I have to be at the 4H Fair, so I will get ahold of, I guess, the spokesperson for this neighborhood association, and this will just have to send emails. You suggested July 22, which, that's a good date for me, but I also would like them to include residents who live on Mount Vernon, that I know have had some problems. And so, that'll take care of that. The fireworks were phenomenal, like I said, they get better and better every year. And it came out of the hotel tax to pay for them. Okay, we have a grass height restriction.
Eight inches.
What good is it?
You mean Grass doesn't really understand the rules about how high you can go?
I just, I don't understand, you know?
If you have--
Everybody's getting the same answer about high grass on private property that is abandoned or not--
And what's the answer, what do we tell them?
Well, the most recent one is, "Well, this house is in foreclosure."
Yeah, that--
But, I know from--
It's like, there's a pipe in the water.
The classes I've taken, the house is in foreclosure, the person's name on the property is still responsible.
We will take care, every one of those lights, please just call me if you're not, if it's not getting--
Everybody's getting the same answer, I mean, it's coming out--
We'll give them a different answer this time.
That it's going to get cut?
Yeah.
Okay.
If that answer's not working, we're going to try something else.
Or we can't cut it because we don't have the bill.
Even, I don't care where it is, if it's in foreclosure or some bank in Utah owns it, eventually it's a neighborhood problem.
It is.
And so I'm going to give you an eight-inch ruler, and you can use it for crabs, too. That'd be a big crab.
And if you'll give me the addresses, I'll get--
I will send them on it.
People shouldn't have to put up with that.
Okay, thank you, I'm going to hold you to it.
Public state and worse can be hard to live on.
I know, now, I'm going to be out there mowing lawns tomorrow now.
It's not coming out of the second floor office that way. The sign ordinance, Kristen's here, Kristen Owen from, she's president of DCA now. I contacted her and told her I will be at the next DCA meeting, which will be July 17 to 3 Thursday, right?
Right.
And we'll find out how many people belong to the DCA, and then notify businesses that don't belong to the DCA, so we can put together a time for a workshop on the sign ordinance, because I know every place in town that Case has been in the past two weeks, not only in my ward, but in other wards, people who have been told that they're going to get fines. And so I'll hold all that for the sign ordinance meet, workshop, and--
Who do you want to lead that workshop? Do you want to lead it, or, because I was thinking the Planning Commission and the Historic District Commission would meet jointly.
The Historic District Commission to be there, the Planning Commission, and all the businesses who want to attend.
C2, oh my God.
No, well--
I thought we resolved this, where the Planning Commission and the Historic Commission was going to take up that fair.
I would like them, I would like them to lead a meeting where any business owner, like you said, can come and give us feedback on their thoughts on the ordinance, and then they would give us their recommendations based on the feedback they got about any edits they think were appropriate.
What part of town are we talking about?
All, all the commercial areas.
All three districts in one meeting.
I wanted it for C2 personally.
The issues are really in C2.
C3, I have, I have an issue, you know, somebody called me with an issue in C3, I'll give you that name.
It's going to be a heavy meeting.
How many businesses do you have in your ward?
Well, maybe one more.
How many do you?
The whole sign thing is, we can't just look at it from individual businesses, I mean, some businesses would love to have a great big neon sign that says, "Just me, come in here, just me, and don't go anyplace else." You know, you've got to look at the community and the community we live in, we don't want--
That's why I think it's, that's why I think it's important for the Planning Commission and the HDC to be involved, because they have a community-wide perspective, whereas if I'm a business owner, naturally I want 50 signs for my business, so.
I think that's exaggerating, I mean, what was the sense of having the meetings in the different business districts, and signs come up, and fines come up in every meeting, or I couldn't have a sign? And it was over the edge when we lost a storefront on Cannon Street because they couldn't have a sign. You know, she didn't go out of business, but she doesn't, she no longer rents the space on the storefront on Cannon Street. And I get to seeing complaints from everybody, it's like, and they're not networking, you know, with their complaints, they're telling me that--
I think it's fine if we review the ordinance, I just think it needs to be done in a structured way with, you know, people that aren't tied to a specific business, because, look, I'll give you an example, during the campaign, for the mayoral campaign, signage was a big problem, because people like me had signs all over the place and were told, "Get your sign off." Well, that's because it was in my self-interest to put my signs everywhere, but for the community, it was kind of ugly, when you have, you know, six candidates with mayoral signs, so you have to have some controls, and I get it, like, it's it's easy to say, "My business isn't succeeding because I don't have enough signage." And maybe every once in a while, that's a valid claim, but we need to be also keeping in mind what Marty's saying.
We need to deal with the people who deal with it, what it amounts to.
And I don't agree that, you know, when we had our C1 and C3 business forums, to be honest, like, we had like five people show up.
C1, C1 didn't, I don't remember in C1, but C2, we talked about sign ordinance, and C3--
The biggest issue is C2, that's the most vocal group that we have, it's where the sign ordinance is the strictest, they're probably the ones that will, if we have one meeting, I guarantee you 90% of the people will be C2ers, and that's just the way that it is.
Where in the sign ordinance does it say that you can have your phone number on your hours of operations sign?
I don't know, but that's the kind of thing that we--
Yeah, that's Historic District--
Policy.
You can't have your phone number, I'm open from 8 to 5, but you can't have your phone number on--
That's basically a Historic District policy, it's in, it's in their book.
Their guidelines, I think.
Have you ever seen their book, their guidelines?
No.
You know, I think that what you want to do is fine, and I think if, on an informal basis, if C2 or the downtown merchants say, "Here are 20 different problems we have," before you get in the process of the people who actually change the laws. And come forward and say, "I had a business on Cannon Street and I couldn't have a sign," I find that really hard to believe that there--
There was a shingle, that she was told she couldn't have a shingle.
But anyway, I didn't know that ever happened, but, but there's people out there that are unhappy with the ordinances, and there are people here who have the ability to change it, so if you throw them all together at once, to me, it perverts the process, it needs, it needs to come from that direction. Here are the problems that we have, this is just my opinion, here are the problems we have with ordinance in our, in our zone. Sometimes it's a matter they don't understand the ordinance, and sometimes it's a Historic District policy, and the mayor is right, 99% of the problems come from the C2 area. So, C2 has that overlay of historic on top of regular zoning.
And we had the businesses come to a meeting, they presented, you know, their concerns and their ideas, nothing ever happened, and we have a C2 meeting, nothing ever happened.
Well, something did happen, last year, there were some problems that the theater had, and we actually passed an ordinance, we made some changes, so that historic signs that were there in the past could be repeated, even if it was more than one, so I don't call that nothing.
Well, that's--
I call that something.
With the name on three sides of the marquee.
Exactly, but that came up again with the bank.
Just making, again, just this one with the bank.
Linda, you're getting confused, nothing happened, like-- It didn't get me what I wanted. Chesapeake Bank, they used it again, that fact that it was historically there at the bottom of the pillar. The thing is, I think both, both, all you are right, what needs to come from C2, they know about, and they need to organize it, say, "Okay, we don't think our flat signs are large enough, there was a time when there were no projecting signs allowed, that was changed in 1984," so projecting site. What is today's need? What is-- Well, walk, Ben's teeth are awfully hard, I mean, maybe this person who wanted to put out a shingle, there were already signs, I don't know, I never heard of it. We need to make a decision on how to formally do this, because I don't think like just turning it over to DCA and having them give us a list is going to, is going to work.
No, I mean, notify every, I just wanted to do C2, notify all the businesses in C2 that there'll be a workshop.
Okay.
Do the borders of C2, they don't exactly conform with the borders of the Historic District Commission, do they?
No.
Well, there's some C3 and the Historic District--
It's really like a three-block by two-block area, it's not a big area. It's very, and it's manageable, and actually, the written part of the ordinance is only about two paragraphs long.
Sometimes nothing being done is the right answer. I mean, I don't want to see downtown Chester Town look like Las Vegas, you've been to Las Vegas? You've been to these towns where everybody has signs all over--
Do you really think that downtown Chester Town is going to look like Las Vegas or Ocean City? Come on.
All right, so what, what you want really is a workshop for C2?
Yes.
Okay, are you amenable to the Historic District Commission--
That's what I suggested.
And the Planning Commission taking the lead to run the meeting? Okay.
Whatever comes from this, I mean, I hope there's not going to be punting back and forth, because it seems as if that's what happened with the sign in the past, I mean, one just punts it to another, HDC punts it to Planning, they punt it to Town Council, and we just, I mean, the last Town Council deferred it to us.
I mean-- That's the LED issue, and that's the toughest of all, that really is, that is a very hard question, what's the future of lighting for signs in Historic District?
The last time we had a group in here, I'd say, I mean, what you're saying is right, I got a feeling that, well, it's okay for me, but we don't want it, we don't want it down there, but it's all right for me, but I don't want it up there, so.
What I would like to see is the HDC, the Planning Commission, take the lead on soliciting the feedback, and then they can make recommendations that they think are logical and doable, based on the feedback that the merchants give them, and then they can give us their recommendations, and ultimately, we have to decide--
In a workshop?
What, if anything, we're going to change. But the first step will be to set a date for that meeting--
Right.
That works for--
Going to the DCA meeting on July 17.
Well, the next time that the Planning Commission meets is the 16th, they haven't met since this was brought up, although I know that Mr. Grodsky and Mr. Lane, who just walked in, they have had a conversation where they agreed that they would advise their commissions when that meeting will take place, so that the members will be there.
Would it be okay if they set the date, and then maybe Kristen can help with this, if the commission set the date and then invited you guys to come, would that work?
Yep.
Okay.
So that way, on the 17th, if Jeff sets a date on the 16th, I can get that to you, and then we'll know it.
And we can just make sure it's three weeks or more past the date.
Yeah, maybe the August Planning Commission meeting would be devoted, because there's not a lot on the horizon for the Planning Commission right now.
It's the 3rd Wednesday.
3rd Wednesday and 7:30.
So, Linda, if you're amenable to this, I will email Jeff and Michael tomorrow and try to get this in motion so we can have an action plan.
So that would be the 20th.
All right, anything else from your ward, Linda?
Nothing that I can't take care of an email, but that's, that's it.
All right, Liz?
I'm going to keep it short, because I don't know how we did it, but I was in the office about 2:30 this afternoon, sort of complaining about a certain pothole that I mentioned at the last meeting, that is, had gotten pretty bad, and when I came down for the meeting tonight, it had been fixed, so I have nothing left.
I had to say anything, happy to be one meeting.
All right, blind my blind luck.
Did you run out there with the tar yourself?
Anything else, Liz?
No.
Two-week delay between when I ask somebody to do something--
First, you want to mention July the 15th, we're supposed to--
Yes, that's good, July 15th, we are requested to be at the Kent County Commissioners' meeting, which is at 6 o'clock at their offices on High Street. And two things, two things are going to happen, one is they wanted to have a discussion with us about what we thought of a joint-use police station potentially in the future. And then the other part of it is that Dr. Couch was already planning on being there to discuss some school system issues, so she was going to take the lead in discussing our recreation proposal for the middle school campus, and so we wanted to be there and get a public show of support from the commissioners, and if they give it to us, then we would have all parties on board to go ahead with that grant application, which is due in mid-August, so.
And that's 6 p.m.?
I believe so.
6 o'clock. That's the time they meet.
Okay, request for the public to be on the agenda, Ashley Cohen-Hur, food truck.
That's Cole and her, but, Cole and her, hi, everybody.
Oh, sorry.
I've contacted most of you, so I'm going to resubmit. There's some more new interesting sun things to read, I'm sure you want to. So, I'm trying to get my food truck operating downtown.
This is the same thing you sent me, email this?
Yes, sir. Should I stand here?
Yeah, wherever you like.
So, I don't really know how this goes, because I haven't done anything, you guys were first, though. Did you all read the plan review that I sent you?
Yes, I did.
Yes?
I did.
Great.
Go back to the email, right?
Yes. So, I guess my point of view was that there is a $1,000 a month fee for vendor hawkers, which is mobile people, ice cream trucks and the like. I'm trying to operate out of a private property, and so I'll be in a fixed location, and I'm just trying to work it out with everybody, I just want to figure out what the best--
Did you read the material that you got from Mr. Delano?
Yes.
I read this out to you in an email, did you read number five?
Yes, but did you read this?
Is therefore not subject to the $1,000?
I know, but I suggested that, because in the first part, that was my idea, was that I was going to rent private property so that I could circumvent that, so I actually suggested that to him, so.
That is his finding, to me.
No, no, but I wrote that to him first, and then he wrote this back to me.
So, so this is no longer a valid point, you are not subject to the fee.
The issue was, is that I was going to, I was, I wrote to him that I was going to be on private property, and so that makes me not a hawker, which he agreed to, but then if I could add food trucks into the downtown district language, maybe in the zoning ordinances, then maybe I could be on, on public property, so then I would become a hawker again, so then I would have to maybe try and figure out a way to undo the $1,000 a month fee, so it was kind of like a, it was a back-- So it was kind of like a, it was a back end, contradicted itself.
Can you just give us, I know we're supposed to have read all this email. Just give us a really quick summary of your business plan.
Okay, so I bought a bus. It's a Van Dura minibus, and I painted it this color, and it's fabulous. And I'm gonna sell fresh Mexican-style, authentic Mexican-style tacos out of it. It's gonna be really simple. And I'm gonna be serving lunch, and that's pretty much it.
Where?
I have a couple of proposed sites now. I've been working with a couple of different landowners in town, one of which Mr. Incasol wasn't super fond of. The parking lot that is like right behind his office.
Whoa, 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 stop. I let you talk with Mr. Demoy the whole time, okay?
Okay, yeah, yeah. I know, I know. So it's on Spring Avenue. It's the exit of the one-way parking lot that begins at Dan Saunders' office. And then it's the green building that's been empty for a long time. So there really isn't any parking that's been going on with that building. So, and then also, I have talked to a man who owns another parking lot across from 213, where Bennett's is, that hold like the Dollar General. So I could rent space from him. He's agreed to let me rent space from him. There's other options, so that's where I guess the problem comes to you guys from me, which is, okay, so if I tried to change the language for just C2 to be in the green, in the Spring Avenue parking lot, then if I wanted to go across the street, I think I'm in C3 or right?
C1.
C1.
Over by Dollar General?
Yes.
It's C1. Yes, it is.
Oh, C1.
C1 zone.
Yeah, you're right, I'm sorry.
It's a different commercial.
The point being, it's like a different zone, so I don't want to pigeonhole myself, you know, just by being like, okay, like just this parking lot, or just that parking lot. Because you never know. And I didn't want to make Dan Saunders angry, or any of the other people who, they have a co-op thing going in that parking lot. So there was just like a lot of cooks in that kitchen, which is again... Anyway, so.
A parking co-op?
Yes, they all...
Ashley, are both sites okay? I mean, equal to you?
What do you?
I mean, the Dollar General site, is that equal to you to this one over here? Let me see if I can shorten this. I think Case brought up, he found some good things in our ordinance. This thing about the $150 for 30-day license was much more appropriate than the $1,000 for covers. It's sectioned...
A little history on that $1,000. That came about, and I think you remember. We had furniture trucks coming in, and they would set up in town and sell mattresses and furniture out.
Straight out of Carolina.
And then when people fell through the beds, there was no recourse, so.
So anyway, just, I think that's a much more fair cost for somebody doing business in that way. And his recommendations are basically at the end of his opinion, recommending that it be added to Section 130-11.
Why are you...
Can I just finish, okay? $150 for 30-day license, that could be changed if that was... But what it does do is it says, okay, let's make sure this is safe. Let's make sure that the Planning Commission takes a quick look, like we did at Chester Town Lumber Company when we had the sale of landscaping materials in the summer. That worked out really well. Permission to property owner, that sounds like it's already easy for you, the times of operation, the license from the county for the health department.
I just got cleared today, which is great.
And that site plan review is pretty important. Like, where do customers stand, so they don't get whacked, you know, by a car passing? And you've probably thought of all this stuff. But I think if that was your process, and you said, okay, Ashley, we'll let you do this on a trial basis, and we'll amend the ordinances while we do this, 30 days at a time, and see how it works for you, and see how it works for us. Because I think these things have to be safe as far as pedestrians and motorists go.
Absolutely, so are you...
And over here, we were afraid that people would turn in the one-way, they'd see your van...
Which is like, that's kind of...
It's very Kent County-like that they would, they go.
But then I wanted to...
As long as they're equal, as long as they're equal to you, I think the Dollar General site being C1 zone...
But I don't, but I actually do have a problem with that, because I want to agree with you and like get it passed, and like do it, and just like do the thing.
That's always a good way to do it.
I know it is, but say I get in like some kind of, I don't know, problem with my new landlord over there, then like, then what? Then I've changed it?
Then we're here for you.
Hmm, Mr. Incasol?
Actually, I think, I want to say this to the council. I think anytime that you take a temporary use, and you look at it from a perspective, okay, there's some people who pay taxes, this person, you know...
Everybody who rents a restaurant downtown has to pay. Is not paying property tax, though the landlords are. So that's true. Like, and I will be doing that by paying rent on a parking space. And the only other thing that I wanted to point out was that I submitted this list, which is like other towns on the eastern shore. And this is what they charge. So it just seems really disproportionate that the Chester Town ordinance is $1,000 a month. So like you're saying, change it. But I don't want it to be case-specific.
I don't think you read Case's letter, because it's $150...
I did, I read it like 1,000 times, I have it right here.
$150 a month, not a thousand. It's $150 a month.
If you change it so that I'm with the farmer's market?
No, 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 no. Because if you read that closely, or other areas as designated by the mayor and council, so...
Okay, no, I did, because I submitted a new legislative plan here, and that's an addendum to that.
All you have to do is move to Kent County, get elected, and get on this council, and you can do some of that stuff that you're talking about.
Well, here's another thing I've asked around, and people would love to have prepared food at the farmer's market. They always have.
I think that's a whole nother subject.
Yeah, that's a different issue.
Another doable thing.
What did some of the council members think about this concept, conceptually?
I mean, if you're looking at those two places, are we gonna have to make changes to both the C1 and the C...
You would only have to change the section in this ordinance that involves people that are, you know, peddlers or soliciting, that are mobile. And that, and Case lined it out for you. And I think this is the real solution. And it's, it won't take long, and you could let her do this provisionally. Let her go to the Planning Commission, say, I'm set up like this. I have one space next to me, or two, so that people can walk up to me in front of Dollar General here. And you get started.
I like that.
And then we find out that, then we get 1,300 people in here saying, well, you never, you turned me down for that 12 years ago. But the reason these rules are the way they are is because something happened in the past, many times.
That's why I thought it passed.
And it got passed.
Yeah, I think that's why we definitely need the specific language to food trucks, not just like all hawkers. I agree with you.
So specifically to her, it's only gonna be 150?
For the first month?
Not 1,000.
And if you feel compelled to change this, which I don't recommend that you do, because I think that's a fair figure based on these other ones. A buck fifty a month for operating in town, and...
150 after the first month?
150 a month.
But you said a buck fifty.
That's what some people...
You said a buck fifty for the first month.
It says 150 a month here. And that, if...
But all these other towns are like 150 for the year.
Well, I'd have five-four, which is...
It's gonna take you a month to change that fee. I think you need to look at this like we're gonna have several other people, so.
So will I pay like the 150s starting tomorrow or something provisionally?
For the first month. And they approve it provisionally, until that they can put the changes in place to this ordinance, which will take about a month. If they want to make it 150 bucks a year, that's fine. I think, you know, just a little bit more thought to what Mr. Demoy said, and you'll have it. It needs to be on private property. I don't think, unless you make...
But that was my idea.
Well, I'm glad, you've got such great ideas.
I know, thanks, I appreciate it.
In other areas, they've designated whole streets where they have, they have these trucks. What's it called? Eat Street. And that's cool, too. But you know, you want to do that on Talbot Boulevard, or Spear, or something else, where, you know, it's totally appropriate. And I never brought up the fact that that gas bank blew up in Philadelphia.
I knew you were gonna say something about it.
I would never say that.
You ate your first taco at double price.
I can't take a taco from...
I just said double price for this first taco.
I think that's the way to handle it. I think that's a better area.
And then I think I would like to explore coming to the farmer's market.
Well, her tacos are gonna be well-known.
People have wanted, unless you sit up at the Hook and Spork lot.
I'm gonna be wherever there are hungry people, so, I mean, if that's the theme parking lot.
If you put that on the side of your... We go wherever people are hungry.
I just want to start selling tacos, that's so I'm satisfied.
There's nothing I like better than a good taco. I'd be concerned about proliferation of food trucks, and particularly with smells of deep fryers permeating through, you know, through the downtown. So I think it's something we don't, we want to be careful.
It can't be any worse than the exhaust fumes coming from the restaurants. They're banging their permanent.
The only place I know, never mind, I don't want to...
Can we summarize the steps again, in as simple language as possible?
I will. I will say that the zoning, in C1 zoning, on private property with health department approval...
But not C2?
Not now, not for this. Because I think C2 is full of problems, you know.
What if her lease falls through on C1, and she ends up in C2?
Why not both?
Because the parking lots, where are some other parking lots that would be appropriate for a food truck in C2?
Oh, you're including C2 in this now, right?
I'm just saying that the second site she chose, which happens to be C1, is the better choice.
Better for visibility.
Better?
It wasn't really like, I didn't come to that because it was like the better visibility, or I'm just like trying to get a place that's near the people downtown, because I don't want to be some, I don't want to be far away. I've had a lot of counteroffers from other, you know, people in the community. When we talk, they're like, well, why don't you go here? Why don't you go there? And it's like, because I want to be downtown, because I think that everybody downtown loves tacos. So, I don't know.
It really is, this is the right part of the ordinance to change. The process can be simple enough. One visit to the Planning Commission for site plan review of the way your truck's set up, and does it work for ingress and egress of vehicles through the parking lot. This one's a problem, because it's privately held by three owners.
But that's not, that's not the problem of the, like, that's not for the ingress, egress. They agree to it, though, that's not, I mean, that's private property, right?
They don't agree to it all three.
How do you know, though? It's five people, and...
Okay, well, five. How do you know they do?
Well, because I've been talking to all of them. I've been stopping them down on the street, because they won't take meetings from me. So I found they're getting their hair cut.
Let's summarize at the next meeting. Ashley's okay, should I finish, or do you...
Yeah, no, no, I'm just, I'm having fun.
Okay, me too, I'm having it, this is great.
I've been waiting here, I've been waiting the whole meeting to talk to you.
You have been very patient. I've been amazed how patient you were, actually.
I can't believe it either.
That was good.
But anyway, I think that this, for this probationary one, C1's a good start. It's better laid out for, because you got the property owners. You know, there's not gonna be any people going the wrong way through the parking lot.
Wasn't C1 your second choice?
Yeah.
C2 was her first choice.
Just because it's like right there for people. I've got the downtown Chester Town Committee care to back me, and...
Is this covered that she can't just park on High Street someplace and set up?
That's true, she can't.
He's questioned, that was a question.
She cannot.
That's a question. Is there anything in here prevents her from going down the end of High Street downward, and pulling up?
That's the $1,000 a month fee.
Yeah, it does.
It is, yeah.
It says you can't do this on a public street, okay? What does the council want to do? Do you want me to try to end up summarizing, or you heard enough? I think you've got to change some rules to allow it, or do it on a probationary basis, till you can change the rules to allow it, okay? Otherwise, anybody who walks in here, you need to do the same thing for them that you're doing for Ashley. Just say, okay. You need to get organized, because I don't think she's gonna be the last person with a food truck that wants to operate in Chester Town.
Well, she's on private property, both locations, right?
Yes.
Food trucks are becoming very popular.
C2 was your first, to which C1 was your second.
Does the truck stay there permanently?
No.
Do you remove it every night?
I don't, whatever you want. Seriously, like I can move it if it's a problem, or I can leave it.
She can actually take a food truck to Dixon Vale as a lunch canteen truck at their request.
Also private property, which is the same.
Yeah, but if they say, hey, we want your canteen truck up here, that can, you know, we have nothing to say about that.
But that's also a different district, right?
It is, it is, it is a different district. And it's not, there isn't language that states that they're allowed there either. Which is the other, yeah, that was the only other thing, was that there was the Section 17042B, the Part 16. And this finding, it just says restaurant, not drive-in, but there's another phrase in the actual ordinance that says an eating and drinking establishment, which could just mean food trucks. So it's like an interpretation problem.
But here's the thing. Why should the town tell her, no, you can't be in C2, when she has the permission of the property owners?
Well, because you have the Planning Commission that said what that parking lot was supposed to be. When Saunders built his building, they had meeting after meeting about who gets the spaces and what they're for.
Well, they're not actually all allocated, which is where the co-op part comes in, because they're not specifically, if they were specifically written in, then there wouldn't be any discussion between all the people. But that's why there's like the co-op thing.
See, I was there when it happened. What do we do to allow the preliminary approval?
I really gonna, I don't, I was trying to give you a way to do this. I think the way to do this is to do it in C1 on private property. I can imagine that if Kent Plaza said, hey, we want a food truck up here,
But that's not down to...
We would do, we would do the same thing. We would say, okay, is it safe for people to stand there and get, you know, is traffic, you know, is this gonna be done? And if others come, is that gonna be all right, so?
I could see you going to places like Dixon Vale at lunchtime.
You can. That's a private factory.
A lot of those trucks go to the businesses at lunchtime.
That's unregulated. But if you're operating as a business in a commercial zone, and you need these few things that I just mentioned, I don't think they're...
I don't understand the distinction bill. You said we should give her approval, which I'm quite willing to do, to permit the operation in the C1, that is, at the Dollar General, what we call the Dollar General parking lot, that parking area that we know what we're talking about. But then, if she then goes to Dixon Vale, that's not C1 anymore.
She goes there to serve lunches to their clientele.
So how is that different from the operation at the main location? I mean, are we giving her cart lunch to operate anywhere in town, as long as it's on private property?
No, no. There is a difference, though, between operating a business in a parking lot and going to a...
To the parking lot at Dixon Vale.
To go in there, yeah.
What's the difference?
They're, they're invited by the factory. If, if they're invited to be their lunchtime canteen, that's-
Without paying?
Yeah, that, that, they're going there for, just like the schwamms truck.
Just like a caterer.
That, yeah, exactly. But the, I mean, it's, there's small distinctions, but you're not really asking her to do much to get into operation. So I, I don't know why there's all, all this questioning. I mean, it, and you have the power to say, go anywhere you want. I mean, so you can do that if you want. I don't, I don't recommend that because I think, you know, there, that, that you need to, to make sure that if 15 people come in, you've got it all.
Safety problem, anywhere you want. Right.
Now, whereabouts specifically in the parking lot on the other side of Washington Avenue, would you be close to, in the Dollar General area? Where would that be?
Um, probably towards the back, towards the grass there where-
Up by the telephone?
By where you need.
Okay.
Right in front of Hellman's? Great.
No, no.
No, just kidding.
By women.
Yes, maybe like closer towards the road so people can see. I mean, I don't think you'll miss it.
That seems like a lot safer location to make, across the street here.
Let's do it.
Cool.
I mean-
Yeah, just, I'm trying to figure the wording out, what we, what we-
Yeah, I would like us to, on the record, summarize what we're approving.
Yeah.
Like what are the conditions?
Think that you're just, you're probation, you're approving on a 30-day probation period under the Section 130-11, that she operate business, business until these three other things can be done. You already know that she has permission to the property owner. You already know that the zoning is a commercial zone. And you want the planning commission to just review her location as you would anybody else for safe operation. Okay?
What was, what was the code part?
130, I think it's 130-11.
Yeah, 130-11.
That should probably be written provision for the property owner.
Yeah, she said she has it.
I have a written lease.
You do have it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For which, for which one are we talking?
Both.
Oh, I see. Both. So which location are we talking about?
C1 location.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that, and, and I think you're doing something, you're, you're taking a step to help her out, to get started. And you're also covering yourself by saying, we're going to, we're going to make sure that we have a, a small process.
I want to know if the 30-day delay has anything to do with the planning commission possibly reversing, changing this? And if so, will it come back to the mayor and council?
I don't expect them to, to reverse it. I expect that Ashley will give them like a little diagram or a Google Earth thing saying, I'm here. By the way, I've, I've been there for a week already and it's working beautifully. Or I hate it, you know? But anyway, I think that shows-
All right, let me, let me try to summarize this. We're going to give 30-day probationary period approval while we try to tighten up the zoning ordinance, which currently doesn't recognize food trucks at all. The changes would come to Section 130-11. We would require writ permission from the property owner. We prefer that it be in the C1 commercial district just because of the size of the parking lot for safety reasons. And this would be pending planning commission approval of a very basic site plan showing where you're going to be and how people are coming in.
I did that already for the first one, so I know just what to do.
All right.
I'll see you in a little bit.
Is everybody on board with this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion?
I, 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 yeah, I think that-
You're flummoxed.
Come on.
I think that would be, I think that would, yeah, I think that, that's what, I thought that's where you were heading.
You just introduced it.
Yeah.
But I don't think I can make a motion as the mayor. Can I?
Yeah. One of the, one of you all has to make some.
Okay.
I just want to caution you.
You got a second?
The restaurant business is the number one business. The people who enter the business. It's also the number one business people go out of. So I don't want to throw water at them.
But Marty, you don't know her. She's a juggernaut. Okay, so you made the motion.
I've made the motion and a second.
Linda seconded it. All those in favor? Any opposed?
So who's taking the lead on?
We'll, we'll take it from here. We'll be back at, with the amendments to 130-11 and